Okay, so opening in the order that they are sitting is the order that they will start answering the questions. We're gonna start with one-minute opening statements, and Mike, you start off first.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Gibbs. I'm seeking reelection as village trustee. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the River Forest Civic Association for your commitment to the community. I would also like to thank all the candidates that have chosen to seek office to serve the people of River Forest and all the current elected officials that are here tonight. I'm the only incumbent seeking reelection. The village board is losing two fine trustees in Susan Conti and Carmela Corsini. They have served the village with honor, and I believe they have left the village in a strong condition. I feel the duty of the village trustees is to be an active steward of all aspects of village government and to make the best possible use of your tax dollars. I grew up in Oak Park. I've lived in River Forest since I married my lifelong River Forest resident Sally 30 years ago. We have twin 15-year-old daughters, Abby and Molly. I look forward to addressing your questions tonight and speaking with you afterwards if you wish. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Greg?
My name is Greg Kenster. It's pronounced Ken-ster. You is silent, sorry. My family has lived in a home on Park Avenue since 1950. Our family has kept our home for over 100 years through hard work, frugality, and discretion. Like many of you, our family struggles paying $2,000 a month in real estate taxes. I married and have valedictorian children attending this school, Roosevelt. For the last 27 years, I've been employed as a large entity corporate tax examiner for the Illinois Department of Revenue. Prior to accounting, I worked in the AIDS ward and the intensive care unit at the University of Illinois for 10 years. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. You know, I didn't ask Bob or not? Bob?
Good evening. My name is Bob O'Connell. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Civic Association for putting this together and giving us this opportunity to share some ideas. I'm actually a second-time resident of River Forest. I spent some of my high school years here, then went off to college, moved away, and came back about five years later when I met and married my wife, Holly Economos. Somebody has asked me the question of why I want to be on the village board. I have a 35-year career in commercial real estate, the last 26 of that with a corporation in downtown Chicago. I think some of the things that I've done in my business life, I think, transferred greatly into the village where I can add to some of the things that are going on. I think there are some hot topics that we're gonna talk about tonight that I think, again, my business experience, you know, leads me to a great place in being able to add and benefit the village by being a member of the board. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Erica?
And test this mic. Hi, my name is Erica Bachner. I moved to River Forest 10 years ago with my husband and daughter, who now is here at Roosevelt Middle School. And we moved here for the excellent school system and the unique character of the village. And River Forest has really exceeded all of our expectations. In the community, I've been involved in leadership roles in Willard and Roosevelt School PTOs. And in the broader community, I've helped lead efforts in the passage of the welcoming village resolution. And it was with that work that I recognized I could help be a voice for all in our community. I have 13 years of investment banking finance experience, several years of corporate real estate and commercial interior architecture experience, helping companies like Starbucks come to neighborhoods like River Forest. My priorities as village trustee would be collaboration, community, and connection.
Thank you. Katie?
My name is Katie Brennan, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Civic Association for hosting this forum tonight. I'm running because I've enjoyed the privilege of more than six years of leadership experience in River Forest. As chair of the village's Sustainability Commission, as member and president of the River Forest Parks Foundation, and as a leader of the annual Lemonade Charity Event, I'd like to continue to give back on the village board level, and I'm asking for your vote. My priorities for the village are thoughtful, smart economic development, continued enhancement of the quality of life in the village, and above all, community safety. I believe that most issues before the board are not black and white and would require careful analysis and thoughtful consideration. I've demonstrated these abilities and skills in responsible stewardship on behalf of the village and the Park District, and I'm ready to apply my experience and skills on your behalf as a member of the village board of trustees. Thank you for coming out tonight for your time.
Thank you. All right, the first question is gonna start with Greg. And that question is, should the village adopt a rule that requires two readings of ordinances, each at a separate board meeting, before passing it? Again, if you have, if you want me to repeat that, just ask. Should the village adopt a rule that requires two readings of ordinances, each at a separate board meeting, before passage?
I believe the answer to that, my answer would be yes. And the reason is because the most valuable asset, or one of the most valuable assets to the government is transparency. And although they try to be transparent, many things in the government aren't transparent, especially accounting-related items, which I'm an expert at.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Thank you. I believe yes, the answer to the question is yes. I think there are a number of issues and intricacies in certain topics that come up. In order to give everyone a fair evaluation of that, I think, you know, the first and the second readings come into play in a lot of other municipalities and serve them well, and I think would do so in our village also.
Thank you. Erica?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I was at the village meeting where a neighbor brought that up, and it makes sense. It allows community members to be able to have some time to understand what's happening and digest the information and be able to provide their support or opposition to something that's coming onto the board. So yeah, I think it's a very good idea.
Thank you. Katie?
Yeah, similarly, I was at the village board meeting just this past week where it was discussed again. And I think that the purpose for it is notice and transparency and full communication to residents, to give them an opportunity to raise their hand, to show up, to talk to their friends and neighbors and to the village trustees in advance of the discussion or whatever that topic might be, so that we can have a really fulsome, open discussion, hopefully one good discussion, and not have to continue to belabor it as more people, you know, disperse more information after the fact. I agree with it.
Thank you. Mike?
Speaking as the only incumbent up here, I can honestly say that the overwhelming majority of the topics that come before the board would not require two readings. They're fairly straightforward. They're borderline simple. We're talking about basically doubling the length of the process of village government. Would I be opposed to second reading, two readings for particular topics of controversial issues? No. But to just make a blanket statement, to read everything twice. The village board meets, you know, in theory, twice a month, and the people in this room, when they ask the village board for an answer, they want an answer. Not everything that comes before the board is controversial. So there's a fine line. Who's gonna decide, you know, what's, not worthy is a bad word, but it's not necessary for an overwhelming majority of the topics that come before the board. If the board chose to do a second reading for certain topics, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Next question. Bob, you're gonna start this off. If you did not have budget, time, or approval constraints, what one change would you implement immediately as a village trustee? If you did not have budget, time, or approval constraints? That's pretty rough. What one change would you implement immediately as village trustee? Ice cream for everybody.
Yeah, this absolutely is the king of the day question. And I have a very smart aleck response, which I won't give you. You know, I think, wow, it's difficult. I think our village staff does a tremendous job working on programs and processes, and I think some of the, I don't know, I think some of the work that they do in terms of public safety, you know, improvements to public safety would be probably the first priority that I would have. And so using, you know, having the ability to take and use technology and spend money on technology to improve public safety would probably be, you know, my one priority, given those subparameters.
Thank you. Erica?
I actually tend to agree about the technology part of that. And it really makes such a difference when you are looking to try to engage a community and want to be able to connect with people on a one-on-one basis. And so I think that anything that allows for engagement in our community is really important, and technology can be a great use of resources for that.
Thank you. Katie?
I would enact the Bike Path Plan that our River Forest Bike Task Force is working on and is consulting on as an addendum to the draft comprehensive plan. It's a, so far, it's a fabulous plan. We've got residents who are volunteering their time to work on it. These are residents who bike to work for exercise and, you know, socially around town. So they know, and keep your eyes open looking for this Bike Path Plan. I'd also, if I could do two things, I would also expand PerTech compost to village-wide, and that would make it free.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, the humorous answer would be to secede from the state. Springfield really doesn't do us many favors.
You want to annex for Chicago, is that right?
Well, we don't answer them other than our water bill as it is now, so. My more realistic response would be, we live in trying times with regard to the environment around us. I think it's the village board's number-one responsibility to protect the home values and to protect the citizenry. And with that protection, my fellow candidates have talked about technology. Technology is a fine multiplier. We've made great use of it with the police department and with the water system in the north. I would improve that with police and fire as well to keep providing better safety for the villagers.
Thank you. Greg?
I agree with the bicycling and composting. My family's involved with that. I think a pressing problem that we, there is no easy answer to, but it's, no one wants to look at about it. There are heroin sales that are going on at Lake and Harlem, and we have a homeless problem from the CTA. And I would like to engage some communities if we have the resources, which we don't. And that's what I would like to do.
Okay, thank you. Next question's gonna start with Erica. Do you support the village's welcoming ordinance? Why or why not?
I do. There are so many reasons why I do. First, it makes everyone safer here when people know that they can come to our police and come to us and know that they will be safe, no matter what their status is. And it also just brings so much character to our community. The people who live, work, go to school here are just amazing people, whether they are, whatever their status is, so.
Thank you. Katie?
Yes, I support the welcoming resolution. I think that we are a stronger community when we are more diverse, and I think that River Forest has a lot to offer, and we offer more when we have more diversity.
Mike?
Well, record says that I did not support it, and I continue not to, even though it's not the popular answer in this room tonight. I'll say the same thing that I said that night. I'm an elected official. I have two FBI agents in the family. By definition, the welcoming resolution described us as the enemy. I had a problem with that wording. I still had a problem with the wording. I was reluctant to reduce the resources provided to the police department by not adding full cooperation with our police and any other law enforcement agency. We're a small police department. We need all the help we can get, be it county, state, federal. There were things in the welcoming resolution that restricted that kind of cooperation, and that's it. I'm a law and order guy. If the laws don't fit given community, the process is to change the law, not to not enforce the law.
Thank you. Greg?
I believe that we should be welcoming, however, it starts with us collectively. My family is minority, my wife's a minority, and my children have been verbally assaulted. And there are some true believers in the government that are not welcoming. They say they're welcoming, but they're not. And we need to change in the community. We can make all the resolutions we want, and it's not an easy, not an easy road to hope, which it isn't.
Bob?
So, it's interesting, I attended the village board meeting when this was, one of the sessions when this was being discussed, and as I sat back and I listened, I thought about some of the places I've been around the world and where I've seen people who have been stopped on streets, who've been pulled over in their car for no apparent reason, and, you know, said to myself, "I don't want to live in a place like that." And so, when you look at the ordinance, you know, I don't think it's the role of government to get involved in people's personal lives if people are living, you know, if they're living a good life, if they're participating in society, if they're not doing illegal activities. I don't know that it's the role of government to get involved in that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next question. TIF districts, discuss. Oh, sorry. I live in Oak Park, so I'm well aware of multiple issues that come up with TIF districts. The district itself, the length of the money, where it goes, how it's used for. River Forest now has same issues with some of the TIF district developments. What are your feelings about North Avenue right now is the hot topic in River Forest, correct, on the TIF district redevelopment? Or is it Lake and Lathrop? That's the new one with TIF? I don't know. Asking about River Forest. But it is the question about TIF districts, and how important do you think those are to River Forest in getting development done and getting people to move in and getting businesses to move in?
Yeah, so right now is a really unique time for River Forest because we've got TIF districts and a commercial development plan for Madison Street, North Avenue, Harlem, Chicago, and then along Lake Street, the downtown River Forest, down the commercial corridor. It's particularly unusual because River Forest is a largely built-out community of 2.5 square miles, and most of the buildings in River Forest are over 50 years old. It's a, that's why it's unique. It's a great opportunity because we have an opportunity to expand the pie of taxpayers by bringing in businesses and helping our commercial corridors become more vibrant so that they can help us, help ease the tax burden on residents. That said, we have to make really careful, thoughtful decisions about what businesses we bring in, how we bring them in, considering parking, architectural styles. I'm seeing a stop sign in my face. Accessibility, and also consider our residents who are more affected by this development than others because they live closer.
It's just a long sentence, that's all. You get to finish a long sentence. All right, Mike?
River Forest has had great success with the TIF district along Lake Street. I've lived here my whole life. Harlem and Lake was a desolate wasteland that we called Wee Bolts in the heyday of roller skating and skateboards. The parking deck at Wee Bolts was fantastic. Other than that, it was a complete waste of space. Everyone in this room knows how vibrant Harlem and North, or Harlem and Lake Street is right now with the Town Center 1 and Town Center 2. TIF districts are not about villages taking over property and building what we want. TIF districts are about villages promoting those corridors to developers or to themselves, improving the area with the TIF money, like along Lake Street by Jewel and Keystone Park with the fencing and the bocce court and all. That was all TIF money. It's not all about tear downs and rebuilds. It's about improving what's there now as well as the future.
Thank you. Greg?
I believe that North Avenue and Madison Street and Lake Street are going to get developed in the future. Whether we have TIFs or not, I'm not for TIFs because they are not transparent and it's just a slush fund. And you can say, "Oh yeah, we got some stuff for the park," but I don't think that excuses it, and I don't think most of the residents of town are for high rises. And that's what it's about. I don't want anymore, I don't want to be Oak Park. I'm sorry.
Could I have about an hour and a half on this one? So, in my 25-year gap, when I left River Forest and then came back, I lived in Almhurst. Almhurst, over the years, created four TIF districts. Two of them will roll off the rolls this year. Last year, the TIF districts generated $62 million in retail sales. Now, I'll caveat that with several of them are car dealerships. So, to the earlier point on what TIF districts are intended to do, they're intended to aid developers in developing real estate in particular areas. We currently have two areas in town where we have TIF districts, and I think, as, I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Commission, we talk about this on a monthly basis, on what we want to do and what we can or can't do. And the nice thing about TIF districts is we can control what goes in and what doesn't go in. And so it's not about building high-rise buildings. It's not about, you know, spreading out the money all over the place. It's about, you know, having strategic plans about developing real estate. And again, in our community, we have so little of it to do that we're gonna be able to control that and make sure that we get the things that are there, excuse me, the things that are there and the things that are right for the community.
Thank you. Erica?
I am excited about, in particular, North Avenue, what you asked us to focus on as a TIF district, because I think it will bring funds to the community that we need and brings an opportunity to develop lands that we have there on North Avenue. We have to be so careful about the communities that are already there. As someone who lives adjacent to the North Avenue TIF district, speaking with residents there, they want to make sure that their neighborhoods, whether it's the apartments or condos or townhomes, aren't going to be completely demolished, that they aren't gonna be permanently displaced. So I think we need to have someone on the board who's gonna make sure that the big decisions that we have along that TIF district include community feedback and that we really understand what is there already.
Thank you. Mike, we're gonna start this next question with, for you. It's four years down the line. You've been re-elected. What would you say would be your most, you're most proud of getting done in that four years as a trustee?
Certainly Lake and Lathrop. It's taken over nine years now to move that along. The economy didn't help us out in the late 2000s. Property has been acquired now. That beautiful chain-link fence is up with the signs on it. It's not great. I get it. But it's also gone from a plan, an idea, to a project, to a plan, to now moving forward. The tenants have moved out. It would be a fantastic development when it finally takes hold. And four years from now, when I complete this term, if you decide that I'm going to do that, that would be the finest feather in the village's cap, to bring those restaurants and residences to life at Lake and Lathrop. That corner has stagnated way too long.
Thank you. Greg?
After four years, if we could keep the sales tax where it's at, I think it's probably gonna get increased, but if we could keep it where it, I'd be happy about that. If we could keep red light cameras out of town, I'd be happy with that. If we could keep the water and trash bill from more than doubling, I would be happy about that. If we could limit the number of high rises to maybe one or two, I really think there's more than that on the table. And I'm sorry about that, but I think that's the truth. Thank you.
Bob?
So, kinda going back to the TIF piece, I think development of the property along Madison Street with retail sales tax being generated from that location, some reinvestment along North Avenue again from a retail sales tax standpoint, I think we need to stabilize the taxes in the community, and I think retail sales tax are the way to do that. I also think the development, not only, to Mike's point, on completion of Lake and Lathrop, the reinvestment of other properties around town, and in addition to that, a safe community where people feel comfortable walking the streets, leaving their doors open and enjoying the community.
Thank you. Erica?
So I think that River Forest in the next four years is gonna have a lot of accomplishments. What I really want to see is engagement from the community, that we are reaching out to as many voices as possible and making sure that we have their input on any of the economic developments or any of the items that come up before the board. So I know we're gonna do great things in the next four years, and just want to make sure that the community is involved as much as possible.
Thank you. Katie?
I would say I would be most proud of thoughtful, open-minded, reasonable decisions, moving each of the development, commercial development projects along. We're all in different stages right now, so we're not gonna finish any of the TIF districts, but moving them all along in a smart, thoughtful way. And I'll also add that I'm pretty excited about the intergovernmental agreement between the Park District and the township and the village on the civic center. That's gonna be one that has some good possibilities, too.
Thank you. Greg, you're gonna start this next question first. How will you use your position as trustee to promote diversity in River Forest?
I spent a lot of time living in a village with dark people. I think that village definitely has a problem. I think there's a lot of people in Village Hall that are true believers. You know what I mean by true believers? They believe that they're right and the other people are wrong. And that's a big reason why I'm running. I'm very happy that Erica is running, and I hope she wins, because I think we need somebody like her. Putting a sign in front of your house that says, "I love everybody," doesn't change anything. I have friends from Austin that won't drive down Chicago Avenue or Division Street because they're the wrong color. That's just a fact of life. I, you know, there is no easy solution to that. But you need to have people with open minds. You can't say, "Oh, they're an illegal alien." Throw them in jail. That's not a reasonable solution. I'm sorry.
Bob?
Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. How will you use your position as trustee? How will you use your position as trustee to promote diversity in River Forest?
I had an interesting experience when my two stepchildren went off to college. They both attended Oak Park River Forest High School. And, you know, we traveled around looking at different schools. And one of the things that, that my wife was very outspoken about with the kids was, you know, being in a place with some diversity. You know, you travel around the country, you're at some of these schools, and you know, you look at the enrollment, 85% of the kids are from that state or 90% of the kids are from that state. And I think it's, it really kind of, you know, opens your eyes as to the communities, the community that we live in. And I think, you know, so to use my position to answer that question, I mean, I think it's, it's more inclusion, it's more communication, it's more engagement and conversation about the issues around diversity that are taking place, you know, at cocktail parties and other places and bring those topics forward to have a broader conversation on the subject.
Thank you. Erica?
So on my block, my family helps coordinate the block party every year. And a couple of years ago, we had someone who lived in the apartments who was kind of rushing through and rushing her kids away from the block party and telling them that it wasn't for them, despite us giving them flyers that this block party was for them. So it really, for me, to have to like push her to go to this block party, I want to make sure that people know that we're open to everyone. I want to work with the leaders who I've worked with for the past several years when it comes to disability rights, when it comes to black people, brown people, of color, when it comes to the LGBTQ community. And everything that's coming through that we are working on should have these different intersections involved.
Thank you. Katie?
Well, the trustees are representatives of River Forest residents, and I think as trustees, we would have an obligation to residents to be out and about in the community, to be welcoming, to be, to make ourselves available to meet with and engage with all residents, not just some residents. And that should be the cornerstone of being a trustee.
Thank you. Mike?
As a trustee, I don't look at people by what category they are in. Everybody looks the same to me, I guess. I'm just naive in that I treat everyone the same way, no matter what. That's really what we should do. I don't need a resolution to tell me how to treat people. I'd like to think that I treat everyone with equal consideration and respect, barring any other considerations that go with whatever category somebody might want to put them in or category that someone thinks that they fit in. I just don't think that way. I think of everybody as a resident of River Forest. And as of today, I've been elected to serve everyone in the same state of mind and being that they are as a resident of River Forest.
Thank you. Our next question starts with Bob. What is your plan for dealing with single-use plastics, either in grocery stores or restaurants?
So I think the way that the current state administration has had it, I think they're, the governor is proposing to implement the five cent bag tax across the, across the state. I, you know, I'm a believer in, you know, recycling those, those bags. You know, we have our bag in the trunk of the car, so when we go into the grocery store, you know, we're taking advantage of using that as much as we can. And I think just the work on the Sustainability Committee and increasing the amount of recycling and again, making recycling more accessible to people, you know, to Katie's earlier point on the composting and, you know, making that more accessible. I think those are the kind of things that, that we should look seriously at in trying to make it to kind of help our environment.
Thank you. Erica?
I'm sorry. Can you just repeat the question once more? I want to make sure.
Sure. What is your plan for dealing with single-use plastics, either in grocery stores or restaurants?
Thanks. Okay. So if what Bob is saying is true, and we're going to have a five cent tax on plastic bags everywhere, I think that one of the things that we need to make sure as people who live in River Forest, that people who are low-income or who may need bags, reusable bags, get that. So in Oak Park, people took it upon themselves to give reusable bags at grocery stores. I think that moving to something like paper straws is something for restaurants to consider. And there's a lot of public pressure on them to do that now when, and when that's, I think that's something that could be very useful in our town.
Thank you. Katie?
Well, when someone asked if I would run for village trustee, I told her I would if she would stop buying plastic bottles. I'm the person who has the slip, the paper slips in her purse that say, that tell your server not to serve straws to your table. And I'm looking at that McDonald's cup, Mike, and it annoys me, but I'm trying to rise above it. Now, Bob, the good news is that McDonald's... No, the good news is for you. You have good news. McDonald's, I believe, has said that they're going to get rid of their plastic straws by 2020. And we do have a McDonald's in River Forest, so that's great news. The answer to the question is education, 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 and has to start before we purchase. It's not a matter of throwing it in the bin or throwing it away or recycling it because the recycling stream cannot keep up with the mass production of plastic. I'm being told to stop.
All right, Mike?
I think anywhere paper could be used instead of plastic, I would be okay with. The five percent, or five percent, five cent tax on the plastic, that doesn't solve the problem. It just puts more money in the government's pocket. People are still going to get the bags. I was proud to push through the Roy Strong contract that has the rolling garbage cans. For those of you that have lived here long enough, the little green recycling bins that we used to have, how, how well were those lids? How, did those stay on really good? Come on, you can say it. We all hate them. But now the rolling things, I was happy to push that through. Paper is a renewable resource and the plastic is fossil fuel, and that's, that's really not a really good choice. So I'd go with agreeing with getting rid of the plastic if paper can serve the need.
Thank you. Greg?
I would agree with most of what everyone said. And my family is involved in bicycling and composting, but that said, I want to admit that I am a hypocrite. I live in a building where we used to have 16 people live in our building. Now it's just me and my two kids and my wife. We have two cars. My daughter's having a birthday. We went to the store and we blew a hundred bucks. My family kept our home through hard work for morality and discretion. Well, we're losing a little bit of the reality and discretion. It's, we're not as conservative or as friendly to the earth as we used to be. I wish I could do a better job.
Thank you. Next question starts with Erica. Public safety has been mentioned tonight. What does that look like in River Forest?
So I think that public safety means that everyone here in River Forest feels safe to walk around on the streets, feels comfortable with going to law enforcement when they need to, and that anybody who travels within our community is treated with respect and dignity and is safe as well.
Okay. Thank you. Katie?
Well, I think public safety is paramount in River Forest. We can seek lower taxes and we can seek a higher quality of life, but I think that all goes to the side if we don't feel safe. I think the police department in River Forest does a really good job. And particularly, I'm impressed with the quarterly crime prevention meetings. I haven't seen that they've been attended as much by residents, and maybe that's because they're held at odd times that are difficult for residents to attend. I think we should be taping them, even better live streaming them, so people can actually participate from afar, but at least tape them so that people can access all the great information that's shared in those meetings when it's convenient to other, to residents. I would also push for state-of-the-art training and technology for our police and fire departments.
Thank you. Mike?
It might come as a surprise to most people in the room that at any given point in time, there's five police cars on the street in River Forest. Now, knowing that, you can't help but be amazed at the quality of service that our police department provides. The bang for the buck is amazing. From a technology standpoint, the village board has done an excellent job of giving the police department the technology they need. And now we're at a point where we can enhance the product as well, whether people know or not, that Central, all the way from Harlem to Lathrop, and Lake Street, all the way from Harlem to Lathrop, is completely monitored by police camera systems that on numerous occasions have, they may or may not prevent crime, but in the event there is a crime, the police can review those tapes and instantly act on it. And then many times, the offender has been caught within minutes. I don't want to sell short the fire department. I consider them a great asset with public safety. And when I talk to people that live in Chicago and they move here, they're amazed that when they call 911, someone comes.
Thank you. Rick?
Once again, I want to reiterate that there is a culture of true believers at Village Hall. There are very few minorities and very few women involved in the police department or the fire department. The elephant in the room is there are hundreds of black children killing each other, 17 blocks that way. And we're asking them to stop attacking us and to love and respect us, when we don't love and respect their parents and we don't even try. That's the solution. The solution is to reach out to the community that's attacking us and try to befriend it. The solution is not to try to source them. You only can knock down the mole so many times, it's going to keep popping up. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thanks. So I think someone said earlier, "Education, education, education." You know, I just want to go off of Katie's comment about the police department and their seminars. I think in, in, Bill President Ducey's State of the Village message the other night, they talked about expanding the, the police seminars just to do exactly what Katie was suggesting is making them more accessible to the greater population. I mean, I think we all, you know, kind of walked up, walked the streets and, and have a certain level of comfort and, and to the point that Mike was making is knowing that there's five police cars out there gives us a little bit of safety and security. I think, again, the use of technology and improved policing methods will, will over time continue to make this a safe community and hopefully make it a safer community in those areas where we seem to have continuing, a continuation of problems on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Last question, we'll start with Katie. What areas do you think River Forest could collaborate with other villages and other surrounding villages and/or towns? What areas could they collaborate with? And is that important to do that?
Well, I'm all about collaboration. This year, on the Sustainability Commission, which I chair, we collaborated with over 30 different institutions and taxing bodies and schools and churches. And that made our programs and initiatives much richer. So yes, collaboration is key. We might be able to collaborate on police and fire that, I don't know. I don't have that experience. I do know that we can collaborate on attracting businesses for the commercial development. We can work with the Oak Park... No, Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. Chamber of Commerce. And then there's the tourism group in Oak Park, which actually covers Oak Park and River Forest, but has an Oak Park name, no River Forest in it. So yeah, and you know, I, I work a lot with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, in particular the Environmental Subcommittee, and that is comprised of municipalities all over the Chicago area. You know, my equal number or trustees or mayors and presidents of other municipalities. So yeah, I think we, you know, we work through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and other municipalities to help pull River Forest along as well.
Great. Thank you. Mike?
The village emergency dispatch system is currently combined or collaborating with many other area towns, Forest Park, Elmond Park, to name a couple. We're looking to expand that. Might be news to the people in the room that this system comes out of our Village Hall. All the dispatching in the area, those big antennas behind Village Hall, those are the dispatch antennas for many communities in the area that River Forest is a part of. We're also tied in with police investigations with the wedge program. Small towns like this may or may not have the capacity or the investigative power to address large-scale issues, and so many small municipalities can pool their resources. Public Works as well. Some towns share their street sweeper. That's many hundreds of thousands of dollars. And collaboration with equipment is also a big way to save tax dollars as well.
Thank you. Greg?
I agree with what everybody else has said so far. I would like to see some focus on sharing resources as far as coordinating the churches and the organizations that help the homeless and the addicted in our community. I don't see a lot of effort there, and I think if I've gotten on the board, it could help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
So just for clarity, a member of the Chamber of Commerce sits on the Economic Development Commission, so we have that one covered off on it, so we do use that resource. I think, I think to Mike's point, I think there's some big-ticket items that are out there that, you know, that could be used amongst the villages. I think that's a, that would be a huge cost savings. And then I think the proposal that's being studied right now with the community center where we have collaboration and cooperation amongst the township and the Park District and in the village, I think that's going to really kind of set the tone for the amount of cooperation and collaboration that we're going to be doing going forward. I think there's, there's a lot of issues around that topic. There's a lot of people with a lot of opinions, but I think if we can kind of come together on that one, it's a good stepping stone for us moving forward on, on other things and being able to take that success from, from the village out to other villages and show, you know, show, show how we work together.
Thank you. Erica?
I believe that River Forest's ability to collaborate has done so much good for our community because we are a small community. And I really look to Chief O'Shea and him being recognized and being added to the task force, looking at recent crime here across the western suburbs is one way that has really shown collaborative efforts, especially in economic development and... in economic development and the comprehensive plan that we're going to be having in River Forest, looking at TIF and what other towns are doing. Elmwood Park, I believe, is approving a TIF right on the other side of North Avenue, and looking at our bike patterns, and having, knowing what Oak Park is going to be doing in the next 10 to 15 years with their bike plan. These are just a couple of ways that we could collaborate and do.
Thank you. Mike, we're going to start with, you're going to start with the closing statements?
Thank you again for everybody coming out tonight on this cold evening. I hate to have to say this, but Greg, I'm insulted that you would say that Village Hall is, I don't know what true believers means, maybe you could define that better, but what you said tonight, I feel that I need to defend everyone at Village Hall and elected officials with, honestly, I don't know what you're talking about. Again, I'm an optimistic kind of guy. People say, "Why would I want to run for village trustee?" The thing that makes me most excited about being a village trustee is when a resident calls me up and asks me for help with something that Village Hall can solve, and I have the ability to make that difference and get that solution for that person, and they feel that their government works for them. That's my favorite part about this job, is being able to help someone in a situation where they think their village government is keeping them from what they'd like to do.
Thank you. Greg?
Hi. The successful trustee candidates will experience a challenging four years. Property taxes are scheduled to increase 4% to 6% a year for each of the next four years. Property taxes could conceivably increase more. Home values are shrinking. Many families are currently losing their homes because they cannot afford the tax expense. Many more families and longtime residents will lose their homes during the next four years. Water and trash bills will double. High rises will be built. Municipal jobs will be privatized. Red light cameras will be installed. Long-term financial planning is needed now. Household assistance to the elderly homeowners and families during tragedies is the right thing to do, and may lessen the excess of vacant homes in the village. I believe I will be a welcome asset to the River Forest Village Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
First of all, I want to thank the League again and the Civic Association for hosting us this evening. I'm pretty damn excited about this, to be honest with you. You know, my parents moved here 25 years ago, they built a house on Keystone Avenue, and there didn't really seem to be that much of a sense of community. You know, I used to tell people the happiest day of my life was the day my mom sold her house and I didn't have to come back here and reap leaves anymore. But I did move back here of my own accord, and I'm very excited about the people, the administration, the people running the government in River Forest, the neighbors that I've met, the experiences that I've had, and I think, again, my, going forward, I think there's some huge opportunities to work on the real estate taxes and flatten those out. I think the current administration, the developing and supporting the Economic Development Commission with resources from the village administration, you're going to see some changes that I think everyone's going to be pretty excited about, and will definitely help with that tax situation. So, thank you again, Peggy, for helping hosting us this evening.
Thank you. Erica?
Yeah, I want to reiterate that. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the River Forest Civic Association. I'm committed to the safety of the community as my number-one priority, and also to the economic development and engagement of the village. As trustee, I just want to make clear that I will not only listen to residents who want to share their thoughts and opinions on measures in front of the board, but I also want to reach out to communities that we don't necessarily hear from all the time. River Forest is made up of a wide and diverse group of people, and we need to make sure that we're seeking out their points of view. The best decisions are made when we can understand the intersections of as many viewpoints as possible.
Thank you. Katie?
Eight and a half years ago, my family moved to River Forest for the schools. This was going to be my son's third middle school in two states and two countries, and I needed the very best middle school possible. I think I found it, and I think we're sitting in it. We moved here for the schools, and we've stayed for the community. We've enjoyed giving back to the community, and one thing that sets me apart is my six years of service in leadership positions within two different River Forest taxing bodies, the village and the Park District. I'm also an attorney, a small business owner, I mentor at 1871 the Business Incubator downtown. I chair a task force for online dispute resolution of intellectual property issues, and I'm the proud mom of three kids who attended Lincoln, Roosevelt, Fenwick, and Oak Park River Forest High School. I'll bring my village leadership experience, my professional skills, my roll-up-the-sleeves work ethic, and my love of River Forest to the village board. I'm asking for your vote, and I thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to give a hand to all the candidates?